President.
Dirk Bowden.
Here.
Emery Dorsey.
Here.
Donna Kimzy.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Steve Timms.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Great, could we all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is approving the order of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the order of the agenda.
Second.
A vote, please.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Next up is the approval of the minutes for January 21st.
I move. Minutes.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? Okay, vote, please. Oh, could we clear the board, please? Okay, please vote.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the public forum. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. Did anyone sign up to speak? Okay. And if you haven't signed up, that's okay, you can still come up and speak. This is a, if you have something to say about the case we're gonna hear tonight, there'll be an opportunity to speak on that case. But if you have something unrelated that you'd like to discuss that's not on the agenda, now is the time to do so. That's fine, just if you'd like to come up and speak, just come up to the podium here, give us your name and address for the record, and let us know your thoughts.
Good evening, Vivian Voss, 6920 West 47th Place. And I guess, as I was reading through the packet, for, is Ms. Wright record here?
She's not here this evening.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe someone can explain this, but this was on the minutes that you just approved from the last meeting. Is it okay if I kinda just ask for clarification on?
Certainly.
A couple things. It says Commissioner Ohm asked if the MUC will go to the center line of the road. Ms. Reckert said yes, typically the zone district extends to the center line of the street. And my question is, do all properties, whatever they're zoned, extend to the center of the street? Does my personal property extend?
No, so the difference being that the property line is still your property line, but as far as where we extend the zone district boundaries, we extend, so there are two different kind of boundaries.
Okay, and so how does the zone district impact a property?
Zone district.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, it just determines what you're allowed to use the property for. So, for example, building a house, single-family house versus a, you know, three or four-story commercial property. That's, you know, the principle of it. It's my understanding that taking the zoning all the way to the center of the streets, probably more of just a bookkeeping issue, just to keep things simple, since the city can build a road on any zone, that just kinda makes it easier.
Yeah, it just kinda gives us a reference point by which we can extend and, yeah.
Okay, so a zone to the middle of the street really doesn't apply to anybody's property rights, whether it be commercial or private. Okay. And then, um, okay. I guess that's it for the non-agenda then.
Great, okay. And then there'll be an opportunity for you to ask questions of the commission after we've heard from the city and the applicant. Okay, if that's all for the public forum, we'll move on to the public hearing. The sole item up today in the hearing is case number WV-16-01. This is an application filed by the City of Wheat Ridge for approval of a vacation of nineteen, vacation of nineteen feet of Marshall Street right-of-way for a property located at 4901 Marshall Street. And I believe we have someone from the city, Ms. Ritchie. Hello.
Yeah, my name is Lisa Ritchie. I'm a planner here with the City of Wheat Ridge in the Community Development Department. We are here tonight to hear case number WV-16-01, which is a request for approval of a right-of-way vacation for the western nineteen feet of Marshall Street at approximately 4901 Marshall Street. Like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, zoning ordinance, comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation.
So entered.
The property is within the City of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification, publication, and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, the Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear this case. So again, tonight we're here to talk about partial right-of-way vacation. We're not talking about the entire width of Marshall Street in this location. The approximate location of the proposed vacation is outlined here in red, shown on a 2014 aerial. The section of Marshall Street is located in the northeastern portion of the city, just north of I-70 and south of Clear Creek. This location is zoned industrial employment, which is established to allow light industrial and commercial uses that support employment. Surrounding properties are a mix of uses and zone districts. To the north along Marshall, the properties are zoned C1 and IE. Across the street on Marshall to the north is Creekside Park, and south are properties zoned C1. Continuing on to the south, Marshall Street becomes West 48th Avenue with a mix of commercial uses and zonings. We've got a little bit of zoomed-in aerial here. Again, this is from 2014. The existing structure on the property has been demolished in preparation for redevelopment. And then, just so you know, redevelopment, the next Planning Commission hearing on March 17th, excuse me, March 3rd, we're anticipating doing a public hearing for the redevelopment on this property. So again, the city's comprehensive plan, the upper-left image is from the comprehensive structure plan, the area is identified for employment. The image on the lower right is from the transportation portion of the comprehensive plan, just identifying or reflecting that Marshall Street is not slated for any major transportation expansions. Little bit of background into Marshall Street in this area. The current right-of-way is 110 feet. This right-of-way was acquired when the city was incorporated from Jefferson County, formerly a CDOT state highway that was abandoned. The city assumes it was abandoned at some point when I-70 and I-76 were constructed. We actually have not been able to find exactly when that right-of-way was dedicated previously, but again, it's in the city's jurisdiction now. Just for comparison on the right-of-ways within the city, Wadsworth here in front of City Hall is roughly 110 feet. 38th Avenue in front of the Sprouts Development is roughly 80 feet of right-of-way. And then, what we use on staff in order to kind of guide our determinations for right-of-way is shown within the bicycle and pedestrian plan. And just for reference, 88 feet of right-of-way is what we call for for a five-lane arterial that includes six-foot detached sidewalks and six-foot amenity zones on both sides of the street. And then, 72 feet of right-of-way would be called for for a three-lane arterial that includes bike lanes, as well as that six-foot detached and six-foot amenity zone on both sides of the street. For additional reference, Wadsworth handles roughly 50,000 cars per day in that location. 38th handles roughly 10,000. Marshall Street in this proposed location handles roughly 8,000 vehicles per day. So again, what we're here tonight to talk about is partial right-of-way vacation. Again, the current right-of-way is 110 feet. The city will retain 91 feet, which is more than adequate for all future anticipated improvements in this section. Again, the timing of this is just to be timed with the redevelopment that's proposed to occur on the adjacent site. Future improvements that will be associated with that and installed by the developer include the detached sidewalk and amenity zone on their side of the street. And then, the ownership of the portion of Marshall that's to be vacated would vest with the property owner at 4901 Marshall Street. Just for a reference, this is, I just have one photo of existing conditions out there on the site. So this is taken from roughly the northern property line, looking south-southeast as Marshall curves into 48th Avenue. And just for reference, the property line, there's a post on the far-right corner, lower corner, the property line is to the right of that post even, so you can see we've got excessive width in this area. Part of our process before we can approve right-of-way vacations are to send the application out for referral. We had notified all affected agencies, and we received either no comments back or the request to dedicate an easement for any utilities. The property will be platted as part of the redevelopment, and those easements have already been identified on the plat submittal that we've seen. So the plat would be approved administratively, but we'll be able to accommodate all of the easement requests. So within our code, Section 26-118 covers vacation by ordinance, and it has four criteria for approval. And in summary, they are that it will not leave any adjoining land without access to an established public right-of-way, that the vacation is in conformity with the most recently enacted goals and policies of the Transportation Section of the Comprehensive Plan, that it will not have a negative impact on the infrastructure of the city, and that adequate easements have been reserved for use and/or maintenance. So tonight, that concludes my presentation. Ultimately, staff is supporting this request. It's actually originating from staff at the request of Public Works, and we have Scott Brink, who's the Public Works Director here, who'd be happy to answer any of your questions. Again, we have the four criteria for approval, and the vacation meets and complies with all four of those criteria. So at this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you. Let's start to my left with Mr. Bowden, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, Ms. Weaver. Mr. Dorsey.
I was wondering where the easements, everybody is going to be claiming this one 10-foot easement, and where is that easement? It isn't shown on any of this.
No, that's correct. So it will be reserved on the plat document that is getting fairly close to approval. So it'll be covering the entirety of the front property line.
Okay, but it'll be on the property itself, on these folks' property?
It'll be on the private property.
Okay, so it's not gonna be part of Wheat Ridge's street there? Okay, very good. That's all I wanted to know.
Ms. Kimzy.
No questions.
Mr. Timms.
I do have a couple of questions, please. The first one is, what is the current classification of Marshall Street?
I believe it's a minor arterial.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is, and is 91 feet consistent with a cross-section for a minor arterial?
Correct. It's actually a little wider than what we need for a minor arterial. As, you know, Lisa mentioned before, you know, kinda to give you an idea, some of the other streets, you know, Wadsworth, 38th Avenue, if you look at the amount of traffic those carry and their designations and their widths, this is consistent with any kind of future improvement, should it happen in the future, we'll still have plenty of space.
And then, is this the only place in this area along Marshall Street that has this additional right-of-way, meaning is it worth it to, does the property to the north or south, is it feasible to extend the vacation, I guess, beyond this property line? I guess, kind of, what's the thoughts on that?
You know, we hadn't really talked specifically about it. The width of, of, excuse me, of Marshall in this location is slightly wider for the property to the north, as well as to the property to the south, but being that there's no redevelopment proposals coming forth at that time, at this time, we didn't, we're not bringing those forward.
Okay. And then, my last question is, do you know if there's any underground, so we know that there's above-ground power lines, right, that will be in this new easement, are there any underground, is there a storm sewer or sanitary sewer, meaning would that affect, if we're proposing a detached sidewalk with an amenity zone, would that affect what's built, I guess, or constructed or allowed in the amenity zone?
Sure, so the future site plan that we're currently reviewing, that Planning Commission is anticipating to hear in two weeks, there is no storm sewer in this location, there's a kind of a drainage ditch that you saw in the photo. I believe that the drainage will be accommodated through a similar swale-type design. It's our understanding that there's no specific sanitation or water facilities running the length of that property line. Obviously, they'll need to, you know, enter into the property. Wheat Ridge Sanitation has requested that we reserve an easement for them, although they can't identify if there is a line in that location, so.
But you don't think it should interfere with potential trees, or, I guess that's the main question, right? Can we still do trees in the amenity zone?
No, absolutely, so we are doing trees in the amenity zone, and with the SIA that typically gets recorded along with the plat, the maintenance of trees is on the adjacent property owner, but they will be installed, compliant with the Streetscape Manual and all of our design manuals.
Okay, great, no more questions, thank you.
Mr. Ohm.
I had, I had a kind of a similar question that was just asked, I mean, looking at this, it looks like there's like a widening along Marshall Street, and it funnels down on the north and south sides, and it looks like the subject property is definitely the majority of that that is being vacated. I had the same question, as far as like, why, if the city's initiating it, why not just include some of that area to the north and south? But I understand your statement. Thank you.
I guess the only thing I'd add, by way of question, or probably more appropriately comment, is just, I'd be in support of sort of a general housekeeping task for you guys to maybe harmonize that right-of-way designation from, say, Harlan all the way down through the city's sort of northern boundary up there, just because the, because that unified width, whatever it ideally should be, would allow for those future amenities for bike and ped with the Clear Creek path so close to that location. I, you know, I know it's, it's used as, that road is used as an access point down to the path, down to the Clear Creek Trail, so being able to have future businesses that might be there, or existing businesses, plan for that, and to have the city just kind of have all of that unified would probably be a good thing to do at some point, yeah.
Yeah, I'd just like to add to Marshall Street, we've actually had discussions with the city, Arvada, in terms of bike connectedness between the two cities, looking jointly what we could do to, you know, in the future, you know, do some bicycle improvements along there, whether it's, you know, bike lanes or an off-road trail, whatever might be appropriate. So, you know, we've kept all that in mind with this vacation, that, you know, we'll definitely do some, even if nothing happens with the street itself per se, we want to do some kind of bicycle connection with Arvada there. So we've been engaged in discussions with them as well, kind of for same things you were discussing, there's the Clear Creek Trail there, it's, you know, connects with some destinations in Arvada, so we're looking forward to getting something like that in place there someday.
Okay, great, great, I'm glad you guys are thinking about that. All right, well, if there are no other questions for the city or the applicant, now is the time for public questions for the commission. I see we have Ms. Voss and Mr. Delgado on our list here. If either of you would like to come up and ask questions or give a statement, that would be great, either, but you don't have to. I know here that Mr. Delgado is noted as being in favor of the, of the case that we have in front of us, so you don't certainly have to come up and say anything, but you're welcome to. Ms. Voss, would you like to come up and speak? And again, if you could just repeat your name and address again for this case, that would be appreciated.
Sure. Vivian Voss, 6920 West 47th Place. This is just kind of an education for me, I don't, I'm just trying to understand, right-of-way, I've kind of heard tossed around, I'm not sure I could really define it, but Exhibit Four, and I noticed on your screen that you said was looking to the south, but on Exhibit Four, it says photo taken from near the southern end of the proposed, and it's actually the north.
That's a typo, yep, thank you.
Okay. Then, I guess my question is, if there's somewhere on the map, I've got it printed out here, if it helps me to see, say like Exhibit A, 110 feet goes from the asphalt of Marshall to the west?
Could you, could you clarify for us, just sort of what the new right-of-way might encompass in terms of, is that what you're concerned about, Ms. Voss, is sort of?
Well, if we start with what is existing right now, the 110 feet, then I think it'd be, I know the 19 feet is coming off the west end.
It's coming off the west end, yeah.
So, does it start from the asphalt?
Right, the 110 feet is actually measured from property line to property line on both sides of the streets, not the center line. And the center line of the street, maybe you could pull it up, at least, yeah.
So, the end of the street, and then you go 110 feet to the left, is, what is the existing right-of-way? Is that what I'm understanding?
I think what Mr. Brink was indicating was that the property line, say on the east side, is going to not necessarily line up with the end of the asphalt, it actually might fall inside what the layperson might consider, you know, say, the parking lot over there to the east, or something else. Sort of depends, it's kind of like, you know, a lot of, a lot of our streets, our residential streets don't have sidewalks, and, you know, we'll landscape kind of that strip where the sidewalk would be, that's technically, you know, might be on some properties considered part of the right-of-way. The city might come in and put in a sidewalk or widen the street or something.
Yeah, yeah, just to clarify this further, the, you know, typically, a roadway is centered within the right-of-way, that's not always the case, you know, especially in a location like this where there's a curve, it may not be exactly centered, but 110-foot right-of-way would essentially mean that from the center line of the road, the yellow, double-yellow line, you would go out 55 feet in each direction, and you'd get fairly close to where the property lines are, give or take a few feet, yeah.
So, 110 feet right-of-way that's referred to is on both sides of the road equally split?
Correct, yeah, or very close, yeah.
So, on the property for development, we're really only talking about 55 feet on that particular property then?
So it's roughly, and in this location, we're not sure if, you know, the center line is actually of the road, you know, is actually in the center line of the right-of-way, but correct, so we'd be taking off, you know, 19 feet from the property line, getting it a little bit closer to the edge of road, but it's still gonna be, where the new right-of-way line is, won't be on the edge of the road, it'll still be, it'll, it'll include the new sidewalk and the new street amenity zone for the street trees.
Okay, so of the 55 feet you're vacating, giving to the property owner 19 of that 55?
Yes.
Which leaves 36 on that side of Marshall for possible bike lanes and/or sidewalk. Is that what's gonna happen in that 36 left over?
Right, it would not be exactly 36 feet, because the road curves through there, and to come up with the amount, the exact amount to vacate, the 19 feet, was based on a couple things. One was, you know, the future use of the property, based on their site plan, plus for the city's purposes, if we did have to improve the road, whether that was, you know, widen it to four lanes, plus put in, you know, bike lanes, all those things, bike paths, sidewalks, making sure we still had enough left.
Okay, so if you have six feet bike lane, six feet sidewalk, that's 12 out of the 36 on that west side of the road that you're using. And, and maybe somebody expressed it, but why is the city giving the 19 feet? Why was that?
Well, part of the reason is, and this comes up quite frequently, we often get even requests from property owners when they do similar developments like this, but if we have excess right-of-way and it's property the city doesn't need, that we don't want to maintain either, and we know we're not gonna use it, it makes sense to dedicate it to the adjoining property owner. This is done quite frequently, actually, yeah.
Okay, I understand. So, the property owner comes up to the 36 feet, who's mowing and taking care of that 36 feet then? Because that's quite a bit of weeds and natural.
Yeah, typically, it's adjacent property owner, you know, just like in a residential area, people generally, you know, mow their grass up to the curb, and, you know, similar thing here.
Okay, because if they're not keeping that within the three-feet height limit, then we talk to the property owner about that. Okay. Let me see if there was anything else. Oh, does that 55 feet get into that big sign that's there, that big?
So, I believe that the sign is on private property, and I believe it's not going to remain when they redevelop.
It's my understanding the only signage that exists there now that will remain will be the billboard, which they, which they operate and plan on maintaining.
Right, I understood they were keeping it, but I wasn't sure if it was the right-of-way issue.
No, it doesn't appear to be.
Um, let's see, so, and maybe you might have spoken to it earlier, but it, and you've talked about consulting with Arvada. Any near-term, within five years, bike path sidewalk along that area?
So far, we've talked about bike lanes, you know, restriping the road to put bike lanes on.
You would minimize what the existing road from car traffic to share with bike traffic, is that?
Well, maybe, maybe not. It would probably involve some restriping of the roadway, but that part, portion of Marshall right there actually does have, I'll call it a paved shoulder, where the white lines are striped, there's actually some asphalt beyond the white line, so in some sense, it's already being used as bike lanes in a way, but it would be a matter of restriping it, getting it to the correct width, and putting in the signs and so forth.
I travel quite a bit that road in my daily, and I don't see any bikers on it, I, when they, probably not at 6:00 AM when they're trying to go to work, I guess. Okay, I think that's my question, and then, can we define what right-of-way means to a city planner, or to me as a citizen who not really sure what the designation of right-of-way means?
Are you, like, the legal definition of what right-of-way is?
Yeah.
What its purpose, what its purpose is for the city?
Yeah, just.
That might be useful.
I'm learning a lot with just the center stripe over, and 110 feet, I thought, was all on the west side of Marshall that we were talking about, you know, so I'm learning a lot as to where these feet start and end and split and all, so maybe if I have a definition of right-of-way, then I could understand the future where people are talking about property, and if that makes sense.
Yeah, I guess the short definition of that is, we call it public right-of-way, and it's for public use, that could be for roadways, sidewalks, utilities, drainage, all those things.
Owned by the city, basically.
Owned by the city, basically, even though, even though in portions, it does extend into people's yards and, you know, and that kind of thing, but, you know, it's just there for the city's use in the future, should they need it, yeah.
And on a private property, if this, if I can ask this now, how does one find out where the city's right-of-way comes up to the property line?
We can actually look that up, yeah.
Go from the center line and walk, once you give what the right-of-way width is, then we can just go from the center line and measure it.
You can give us a call on staff, we can see what information we can help you with.
Yeah, it, it's, it kind of depends on the specific property. You know, you look at enough plat maps and stuff up here, and it varies, you know, it depends on when the land was bought, who bought it, how it was assembled, what the city did with it. it. Maybe they transferred some of the right-of-way for half of an assembled property twenty years ago, but didn't transfer the other half, because someone else owned it, it's, it's best, if you have a specific property you want to look at, the, the city planner's office has those records.
I thought it could be general, but it sounds like you have to be more specific.
Right, yeah, it, it can vary all over the city, I mean, I mean, in some places, the right-of-way line, private property line, might be like right at the edge of the street, in other places, it might be twenty feet, thirty feet, from the edge of the street, so it varies.
Biggest thing I learned was, when you're talking about the hundred and ten feet in this instance, that wasn't from the center line into the property, that was on both sides of the, so I, that was a big learn for me, thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you for all your questions, it's great. Would anyone else like to make a comment, or ask any questions to the commission? No, okay. Uh, great, well, I guess we're ready for a motion and some discussion.
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion, I move to recommend approval of case number WV-16-01, a request for approval of a right-of-way vacation of an unused portion of Marshall Street for the following reasons. Number one, the Public Works Department does not see any future, any future needs for this right-of-way. Number two, the request will not hinder the future improvements established on the Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan, or the Wheat Ridge Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. Number three, the criteria used to evaluate a vacation has been met.
Second. Any further discussion, questions? All right, now a call for a vote, please.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
All right, great. Looking forward to seeing the public hearing for that property, it sounds interesting, sounded interesting when we kind of first talked about all of that a few months ago. All right, other items?
I just, I had one thing under other items.
Yep.
I just wanted to thank the, I, I've been riding my bike on Thirty-second, and there is an extended shoulder width by the high school, and that is greatly appreciated.
I'll second that, especially from Wadsworth West out to Kipling, it's nice to have a little extra room. Okay, great.
Before we do the Planning Division ones?
Yep.
We'll let Public Works do a quick update as well, while he's here, too, so.
I got a little map I can put up on the screen.
Wonderful.
You can ex, yeah.
Maybe I, you can blow it up a little bit. That's a little too much.
Should be able to close that side panel.
Yeah, if you can maximize it, too. Oh, yeah. There we go. Get rid of this.
If you click on Fill and Sign, or whichever one is active up at the top, should go away. There we go.
All right, yeah, I, I just wanted to give you a little update of things that'll be going on this coming year in the Public Works Department. Most of, of these things are paving projects, maybe I'll, I'll just blow this up a little more, and we can kind of go from one side of the city to the other, if I can scroll here. Starting up in the northwest part of the city, a project we're gonna get going on pretty soon is, if you can see my little arrow here, Tabor Street from the I-70 North Frontage Road up to Ridge Road, about where the Gold Line Station is, we're gonna be starting construction on that, hopefully within a few weeks here. We'll be putting in concrete curb and gutter, bike lanes, sidewalks, nice pedestrian lighting, all in anticipation of the Gold Line Station opening up. I think they're telling us November, sometime late this fall, so we're getting ready for that. The red lines you see there, those are paving projects, we have scheduled for 2017, Ridge Road, and then Fifty-second Avenue, and, and Tabor running up there. We're actually working with RTD right now on an updated traffic study, based on new numbers, they've projected numbers they're using for the traffic in and out of the station that are a little different than what they had used back in 2007, so with those numbers, we're gonna look and see what other types of improvements might be needed up here besides paving. You know, for example, Ridge Road is gonna continue on through the station and connect with Ward Road. We, we know that eventually a traffic signal is, you know, gonna be needed here at Fiftieth Place, which is gonna be renamed Ridge Road, so we're looking at that in the future, and then also Ridge Road itself, as some of these properties develop up here, and Ridge Road right now is pretty, it's a two-lane, kind of in tough shape, bad shape, and we're looking and seeing what we might need to do to that, too, as far as upgrade it with curb and gutter, bike lanes, nice sidewalks, the whole thing, so we're kind of excited to see things happening up there. Couple other things, as, as we go from west to east here, this, this heavy violet line here, that, that's actually the Kipling Trail, a multi-used trail that we're almost complete now. We got the bridge set last fall, and, and now that we've got this nice stretch of warm weather, the contractor's out there now finishing up some of the concrete work leading up to the bridge. We had a couple, several spots, actually, where there were still utility poles in the way, so we could finish the sidewalk, the trail, those are out of the way now, so you're gonna be seeing that finished up here very soon, and we'll get the, the nice pedestrian lights energized and lighted, and it's gonna look real nice. Some of these other colored lines you see, like the red and the gold, those are paving projects, the gold, all the streets colored in gold are, are streets that will be paving this coming year, 2016. For example, this one, Forty-fourth between Dudley and Wadsworth, you might recall driving down that this past year, there was a lot of utility work going on, and it's, it's pretty beat up, so that'll get repaved. Dudley Street down here, from Thirty-eighth down to Thirty-second, is on the paving schedule, along with a couple other streets over here, like, if you can read that, I think Garrison and Garland, yeah. The green streets are what we call slurry seals, that's, if you've seen those on some streets, it's not a full asphalt paving, but more the, the mix of, of oil and rock, kind of a lighter layer, layer coating we put down. Typically, those are done on streets that are a little better shape, that we don't have to go in and do full paving on, so you'll be seeing that going on on some of these streets. And this map I'm showing you, we'll, we'll also have this posted on our website, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, once it gets finalized, and you'll be able to pull it up and look at it a little closer, further even. The big purple, two, two purple dots here, those are some drainage projects, they're actually storm sewer that run down to Clear Creek, you know, down the steep bank from up above. Both of those locations, we have some large storm sewer pipes that are old, and they're coming, coming apart at the joints, and it's causing some bad erosion problems there, so we're gonna rip those out and put in some new pipe that's fused together at the joints, and eliminate the erosion issues on the banks there, and even improve the drainage up there on top, so those will be getting underway shortly. This purple line here is Wadsworth, we're going into the next phase of the future improvements to that. We just finished the Planning and Environmental Linkage Study last year, and we're gonna be moving into the next phase, which is called the Environmental Assessment and the Preliminary Engineering, so that'll be going on this year, and next year, we'll probably be doing easements, right-of-way acquisitions, making sure we have all the property, doing final design, and then you'll see construction starting, hopefully, late 2018, 2019, so we're excited to get that going. As I move east here, this light blue line here is Twenty-ninth Avenue, near Fenton Street, it's, it's right where Denver Water is reconstructing their two reservoirs there, and if you drive down Twenty-ninth, you probably notice how the street kind of does that funny jog there, so as part of the, once, once Denver Water is done with their project, we'll be going in and rebuilding the street, and, and straightening that out, putting in some sidewalks, improving the drainage, we've got some drainage issues down there, too, so. I think I've pretty much hit on everything here, everything of note, anyway. If there's any questions?
Any questions over here, Scott?
Yeah, I got a couple. Um, you didn't mention, did you say anything about the sidewalks? Are there any sidewalk, like, pieces that are getting repaired?
Um, not this year, the last couple of years, we, we've had money in the budget to do specifically sidewalk or bicycle, bike pad projects. We don't, there was no money put in the budget this year for those things, however, we are gonna be doing a revision update to our Bike Pad Master Plan, I think, which was last updated about, I think in 2010, so we're gonna be updating that, we'll be, you know, going through a public process to get that revised and updated, and once that done, we've, we're looking at, you know, getting back and working on sidewalks and bicycle improvements.
I, and the reason I bring that up, because I noticed that in my neighborhood, over the past five to ten years, they've taken out some sections of sidewalk, and it's the little, you know, the little three-footers, and I, I would guess that they probably just cut out the, the piece that needs to be fixed, and then they just poured a brand-new piece, and because, what has happened now is that it's heaved probably, in some places, probably three-quarter of an inch to an inch on both sides, and I, my question is, is, is the standard detailed to use something that would be like a, you know, a greased dowel to join the existing concrete with the new concrete that's being put in, and my guess would be that that wasn't the case, that they just poured the new concrete in, so now we have these, we have all these tri, there's all these tripping hazards, which means that essentially, you're gonna have to come back in at some point and break up that concrete again, and then put in the greased dowel and, and pour it, so you don't have these, all these tripping hazards.
Right, yeah, one of the things we've been looking at related to that is, I'm trying to think of the technical definition, but it's, it's a sawing, we call it planing thing, where at the sidewalk, like you were talking, you have a joint that does this.
Right, the grinding.
Coming with a machine and actually shave that edge off.
Right.
You've probably seen that in places, but it's, it's not, it's not perfect, but it's, it's a, it's a cheaper way to get rid of the trip hazards.
But are they, is this, does the city have a standard that when they go and they cut out a piece of concrete, that they, they use that greased dowel to connect the old and the new, or is that not the case?
Um, you know, you know, it depends on what's there.
Okay.
Yeah, when we're constructing new sidewalks, you know, we have a standard, we go by like that, but, you know, going in and doing repairs, it kind of depends on what, what we're dealing with there, and the situation itself.
Okay, and then on Wadsworth, you didn't really go into any detail, what is, what is the ultimate, you talked about acquiring a right-of-way, what is that ultimate plan? Just, just kind of a short summary, is that for the six lanes?
Uh, correct, it's, it's six lanes, and we're looking at, you know, sidewalks on both sides, in fact, the one side of this, the street is, is gonna be a two-way cycle track, meaning it's, it's an off-road bicycle trail, but wide enough that bicycles can ride both ways, so we're looking at right-of-way long, yeah, like you said, a six, six-lane section, plus, plus the, the bike facilities and the sidewalks, plus the amenities zones. I don't recall the width, exact width, right off the top of my head, but that's, you know, what's driving the acquisition.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, do you have any questions for Scott?
Thanks for that update, I just have a quick question, over on the east side, maybe by Chase, and DePew, and Eaton, there's been some, I guess, road closures, and I think they're doing, maybe it's the sanitation, or Wheat Ridge, they're, they're doing some, is that, is that a storm sewer, is it a sanitary sewer, is it a water line, do you know what, what they're doing in those streets over there?
It's either sanitary sewer or water, one of the, one of the districts, I'm not sure which one.
Okay, but it's not storm sewer?
No.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You might, I've, I've noticed some, it's like environmental monitoring guys over there, they've, they've been over on that side of the city.
They have patches in the streets, and then occasionally they close off the street.
Yeah. Donna, do you have any questions for Scott?
No, I don't.
Okay. No questions, no questions, Turk, all right. I just have one general question, with all the kind of paving and, you know, roadwork that's, that's going on, something that, that's really caught my eye over the last few years, that some other municipalities are doing, is using a, I believe it's like a fly ash-heavy type of concrete, that makes the concrete more porous, so that it helps to mitigate some of those heavy runoff periods, I know Chicago's doing it in their alleys, is that, is that something that you guys have looked at here as, as an option, just to kind of help with some of the stormwater issues that, that I know plague some of our, some parts of our city?
Yeah, we, we don't have any plans to try that yet, but we're certainly open to trying maybe a pilot project with that somewhere, I mean, I mean, it's, it's been used a lot in private developments, in some, on projects, not, not here in Wheat Ridge necessarily, but like you said, some cities like, like Chicago, I think, has been implementing that in their alleys, and it's actually been, been around for a little while, I, I think a lot of cities have been hesitant to jump into it too fast, because there's, there's always the maintenance concerns, it's, it's porous, but what happens when you get all the sediment and dust, you know, plugging things, and then, so, you know, is, how, how hard are they to clean and sweep, and those kinds of things, so I think there's a lot of, a lot of data coming out yet on those, it, it's an evolving, evolving technique, an evolving product, but yeah, I, I wouldn't mind giving that a try somewhere here, when we get a good chance.
Yeah, well, I just recall specifically, there were a lot of drainage concerns right around Quail, I believe it was Quail Street, and around Thirty-second or so, down by the elementary school there, when we were reviewing a development down there, there was some storm drain and drainage concerns, something like that, where you've got, you've got a location where a lot of that water is running, running downhill at high speed into, you know, residential area, I'm sure that you've, you've got plenty of places you could try it out, so, well, I, I would certainly encourage that, I think that'd be interesting to see how that turns out. Thanks for the update, really appreciate it. So, Lisa?
Yes.
We have this Planning Division Work Program thing here, what's that all about?
Well, I did this for me, just so I don't lose my place, but I do have just a quick PowerPoint, just to talk through it, so again, some of these things you will see on here probably as carryover, but we meet as staff regularly, but annually, we also set our goals, and so this is just to give you a little bit of a heads-up for the things that we're working on, on staff, that you may see come forth this year. As far as administrative improvements, we're always looking to just kind of increase our efficiencies internally, so these include record-keeping improvements, we've talked about this for a while now, but it's still on the list, and that's to implement a web-based permitting system, so that folks, applicants can submit documents online, we can submit comments back to them, things like that, not sure if we're gonna get there this year, we hope to. As well, the Director, Mr. John Stone, would like to look at a department strategic plan update, just to kind of take a look at the big picture, make sure we're heading in the right direction, and meeting this, meeting the city's needs as needed. One of the things that I'm most excited about, and I've been working with our GIS Department, is to implement some online mapping offerings for our public, so we've been dipping our toe in a little bit behind the scenes. The two that we intend to roll out initially are just the land use applications, so that folks can take a look at a map and see kind of what's going on throughout the city, and then as well as our zoning map online, so I don't know if you've ever had the pleasure of pulling up our zoning map, but right now, it's a static PDF, and there's no addresses, and there's no parcel lines, and so we just inevitably get calls all day long, and so we're gonna be trying to implement some online mapping opportunities in conjunction with our new website, so you may have noticed that the city rolled out a new website this week as well. The zoning ordinance amendments, these, again, some of them are carryover accessory dwelling units, we all had the opportunity to talk about that in December, just as an update to that, we delayed the public meetings for those while the Create Your Thirty-Eight process is going on, but they've been calendared now for April 12th and May 10th, we're gonna be holding public meetings to get some input from the residents here in town about how they feel about accessory dwelling units. Sign code update, so in this month's Planning Magazine, I know that some of you have already taken a look at that, the sign codes throughout most of the communities now in the United States have some provisions in them, which are no longer compliant with federal law. As handed down from the Supreme Court, the Reed v. Gilbert decision is gonna impact a lot of community sign codes, and it's been on our list for a number of years, but that bumps the priority for us internally here on staff, to make sure that we are compliant with that. As well as the telecommunications update, we're kind of tabled that a little bit internally, although we hope to be able to get that back in front of everyone here in the next few months. Whoops, sorry. Lighting code updates on our list, I don't know if we're gonna get to it, but our lighting code standards in our code are very out of date, we don't have our lighting code standards in our code are very out of date. Um, we don't have any provisions for, you know, light levels or different types of lighting. It's something that we would like to do. Um, as well as, uh, on Monday, um, we're gonna be taking before the City Council a discussion of self-storage units. So as I mentioned, and you all are aware, this applicant that was here in the room tonight in conjunction with the right-of-way vacation is proposing a self-storage development. We also have two other applications that we're reviewing as staff. Um, those will be coming before you all as either a plan development or plan building group applications coming here in the next, um, month or so. And so staff would like some direction from City Council on if that's a type of land use that we'd like to continue, um, to work with, or if we want to put some different parameters on. So depending on that discussion, we may be implementing some new regulations on that. And again, as we've talked about before, um, considering the simplification of rezoning from RC and NC to MUN, I believe that was a Planning Commission idea that is on our list, although, um, we have some priorities just related to federal laws that we need to get to first. Long-range planning, you all may have been following the Create Your Thirty-Eighth process. They have just held their second public meeting, and they'll be holding their third coming up in March, and that's gonna present, I believe, two final options, um, for consideration, is my understanding. It's not something I've been closely following. Um, again, then, the result of that, um, could lead to Thirty-Eighth Avenue Streetscape Design Process and Implementation. So we'll be awaiting council direction following the Create Your Thirty-Eighth process to see kind of where we land with Thirty-Eighth Avenue. Again, as Director Brink mentioned, we have the Wadsworth EA, and something that our planning and staff and public works staff may take a look at this year is a Streetscape Design Manual update. And then the other items that planning staff is working on, Fruitdale School redevelopment, you may have seen some items come before the City Council over the past couple of months about some finance agreements, development agreements, things like that, for possibly repurposing that school through the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority. As well as Wheat Ridge Housing Authority may undertake a strategic plan, just to kind of take a look at their, um, their, um, organization, to see if they're headed in the direction that, uh, that is appropriate for the city at this time. And as always, other issue, issues, as they are identified, which, that always gets raised up, which is why most of these things get carried over for another couple of years. So, um, any questions on what we're doing on staff? If not, we can, whatever you'd like.
Uh, let's see. Dirk, any questions? Amanda, Emery, Donna, Steve, Scott, nope. All sounds pretty cool. Can't wait to see what happens with all of that. Wonderful. Well, unless there's anything else, uh, we'll think we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
I, uh, put out a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Maybe a motion in a second. Uh, let's vote.
Motion pass, seven to zero.
All right, thanks, everybody.